Thanks for being here. It's great to see, it's always great to see such a big crowd. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on October 8th, 2024, and ask our acting city clerk, Pam, to please call roll.
Commissioner Gass.
Present.
Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson. Mayor Bray.
Present. So I'll ask Commissioner Smith to do the invocation, and we'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for your grace and goodness. May your face continually shine upon us so that your ways may be known in our communities. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first order of business, we have a big crowd here tonight, and a lot of familiar faces, and a lot of people that represent our arts community and humanities community here in the city and the county. And they're here to have me read a proclamation, which I do every year, but it's, I do a lot of proclamations, but this is, this is a very important one because of how important the arts community is, is to the, to the city and our entire community. So I'm going to go up here and read it, and then I'll make the presentation. I get kidded a lot because we do so many proclamations. So. So whereas the arts and humanities embody the depth of human creativity, foster expression, and enrich the lives of all people by connecting them to cultural and personal histories. And whereas the arts provide not only economic benefits, supporting jobs and generating revenue through tourism and local business growth, but also improve academic performance, mental health, and community engagement. And whereas individuals of all ages benefit from participating in the arts and humanities through education, performance art, exhibitions, or individual practice. And whereas National Arts and Humanities Month is an opportunity to celebrate and promote, promote the arts and humanities, and encourage citizens to join in art activities in their local communities. And now therefore, I, George P. Bray, Mayor of Paducah, Kentucky, hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as National Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Paducah, and encourage all citizens to support cultural institutions, arts education, and creative initiatives, ensuring that future generations continue to experience and contribute to our community's cultural legacy.
Want to come up here and do a picture?
You won't be able to see the photos.
Josh.
Good.
We're gonna have to crowd in.
It's like we all just can't handle it.
We should get up and car bomb him.
Keep saying cheese.
Limburger, monster, shredded.
I think I've got everything in here on this one. Thank you.
Everybody leaves. Okay. Everything empties out pretty quickly.
Mike's on the front row by yourself now.
So, City Manager, are there any deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay. I'm gonna get a little out of order here, and just, we got a couple of people making public comments, but I want to go on and ask our city manager to read a letter, and I'll give you just a little bit of background. We had, there was a meeting that took place last week with Healthy Paducah, with the Catholic Charities of Owensboro, who made a presentation about a refugee relocation program that they're actively engaged with in western Kentucky. And there's a lot of misinformation that's gotten out. We've got a passionate community, and it's great to see the passion, but, but there's, but there's been a lot of misinformation. And so I'm gonna ask the city manager, it was forwarded to me and our commissioners today. So, City Manager, if you would.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is from the Office of Chancellor of the Diocese of Owensboro, Tom Lilly, who is the Chancellor and Chief Administrative Officer. Letter dated October 8th, 2024. Honorable George Bray and City Commissioners, dear Mayor and Commissioners, I am writing to provide some additional details for you to share on the presentation that was made to Healthy Paducah Coalition on September 30th. First, our Director of Catholic Charities has a relationship with this coalition, and the purpose of her presentation was to provide education and information on the refugee resettlement process, just as she has done in other communities throughout western Kentucky. I provided handouts with some websites and more information for those who are interested in learning the facts about this process. Please continue to make my office number available for additional questions. The refugee resettlement process is directed by the United States Refugee Admissions Program, and works with major not-for-profit organizations to provide the resources necessary to adequately transition people who are deemed to be refugees, those of whom are determined to be particularly vulnerable and in need of protection. These refugees have been rigorously vetted and worked with the United States legal system for 10 to 25 years. Since the passage of the Refugee Act of 1980, the United States has had a history as a nation welcoming of immigrants, exemplifying a U.S. values-based foreign policy, and a system that promotes safe, orderly, and humane lawful immigration. Resettled refugees are already in your community, but they were transitioned by other organizations or churches. Here is what we know. In the discussions and ensuing Q and A from the above- referenced informational session, numbers and dates were discussed for Paducah if, and I emphasize if, Paducah met all the conditions for resettlement. These were discussions. No decisions have been made about resettling refugees in the Paducah community. There will be more public forums and presentations to groups and organizations on the benefits of this program when more specifics are available. Catholic Charities in the Diocese of Owensboro is a resettlement agency and operates from a strict set of policies and laws established by the State Department. We accept this role because these vulnerable people of God are victims of war or oppression. Refugees are generally educated, hard-working residents, and the data supports the fact they are not burdens on a community. This data supports that this is a population that has enough economic benefits to a community. One of the conditions for accepting refugees will be how much support there is from local governing bodies. It is essential that there is sufficient support for these efforts from both the community's residents and its leaders. There is not a lot more information at this time, but we will pass along more information as we receive it. I assure you, we will work with the community leaders as you proceed through your decision-making process. My hope is that this authentic effort to be transparent with information will suffice until we receive more specific details. Regards, Tom Lilly, Chancellor and Chief Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Darren. And also, I have some handouts here tonight. If anybody's interested, there's a copy of the presentation that was made to Healthy Paducah. There's a Q and A also about the program, and so I'll make those available to anybody that wants them. So. And with that, we'll move to public comments, and we have two people that are interested in public comments. The first one is Rick Robertson. And Rick, if you have three minutes, and if you'd like to come up and make some comments, that'd be great.
Good afternoon, everyone. Now, I'm here, just that letter helped quite a bit to get some transparency over this program and what's taking place. Now, you know, as a citizen, if you will, I think a lot of us are just gun-shod after what's been taking place on our border in allowing refugees or immigrants or so forth that come into our communities. And, you know, and again, I'm here for transparency, to learn a little bit more, you know, and I heard stated that they would be looking for resources from our community. I think we've got a lot of people that are homeless, that maybe we could use those resources in a different way. And so, that's my comments, and I look forward to getting a copy of that.
Okay.
And I'm also asking the letter that you just recently got, are you gonna post that also on your?
Uh, yes. Yeah, I'll be glad to do, yeah.
And I wouldn't mind having a copy of that as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here, Rick.
And just Mayor, because this was read into their record, it will be a part of our official minutes for tonight's meeting as well.
Okay. All right. And the second public comment tonight we have is with Kathy Cord. Did I say that correctly, Kathy? I'm, I'm sorry? Code. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Well, mine's a big one because it's about widening a street.
So would you mind to move in front of the mic so we can hear you present?
Can't hear me.
Yeah, you just move, you can move the mic over.
Let me break everything down here first.
Yeah, that's fine. You can move the mic. It's, that's fine.
Is that good?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. So I was just wondering if any of you have ever driven down Pine's Road. It's ridiculous. It's so narrow. It's horrible. Every duly toted trailer goes down there every day, dozen times a day. Every lawn mowing service, everybody that wants to come from downtown out uses Pine's Road. Everybody that wants to come out downtown uses Pine's Road. It's like it's been neglected. It's like everybody's closed their eyes to the fact that it's now a major, major thoroughfare. And it is. It's used constantly. And I've, I've nearly hit people on that walking early in the morning. People want to use it to walk. They live out there. They can't. It's horrible. If a kid lives here on Pine's Road and their friend's four houses down, they can't go see them. They have to have their mom drive them down there, and maybe she won't get hit coming out of the driveway. It's horrible. It's really, it's really heavy. I mean, I'm assuming, I'm not a native, but I'm assuming it started out as way out there in the country, and then it got paved, so it's all good. But it's not. It should have had some attention to it long, long ago. It's ridiculous. As well as 32nd Street, which also is your cut-through, and Freedman, which is also a cut-through. They're just jokes. This is 2024, and they're used all the time. I mean, go look at Park Avenue. It's clear. Everybody's on Pine's Road. You know, people just don't go down and square it off and come downtown. They go through Pine's Road. It's terrible. It's terrible. It's, it needs a sidewalk. It needs something. It's ridiculous. I know it'd be monumental. I know this, but it should happen. It really should. And Buckner's a joke. They're all jokes. And it's not your guys' fault. It's back in, you know, when it just grew. Nobody, you know, nobody took much attention to it, but it needs some.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a question, Kathy. On the Pine's Road issue, is there, I've heard some other, I've heard complaints about speeding on Pine's Road. Is that part of it?
Well, it is because it's a cut-through.
Yeah.
You know, we want to get from here to there as quick as possible. And, you know, 5 o'clock, 4:30, 3:30 are the busy times, early morning. And it's, you know, really dark on that road early in the morning, and I, I'm nearly hit people. I mean, you know, trying to stay focused, but, you know. Anyway. So I decided to bring it to someone's attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, you know, we are, we are focused on road and sidewalk improvements in the future, and there's a lot that needs to be done, and so I'm glad you brought that to our attention. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member saw requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. City Clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless somebody wants to pull something off. So, go ahead and read them, Pam, please.
Approved minutes for the September 17th and September 30th, special called Board of Commissioners meetings, receive and file documents, personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with West Kentucky Community and Technical College and Paducah Junior College Incorporated in the amount of $85,000 for the operation of the public and government access channels, a municipal order approving a fleet maintenance, motorized equipment, and emergency apparatus service agreement with Crittenden County Volunteer Fire Department to provide fleet maintenance services at hourly rates, and authorizing the execution of all documents related to same, a municipal order accepting the bid of Infrastructure Precast Incorporated for sale to the city of Paducah reinforced concrete pipes related to the Freedman Lane Pipe Replacement Project in the total amount of $73,728, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary to apply for a Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Grant for the County Priority Projects Program to supplement the Street Rehabilitation Program Budget for fiscal year 2026.
So moved.
Second. Call roll.
Commissioner Gass.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. Thank you, Pam. You did that well.
Well, thank you. I get my reading glasses going.
We have, we're, we're down two city clerks tonight, so Pam's, Pam's filling in, and city clerk's a big job. And thanks for filling in. Appreciate it very much. So we have one ordinance to adopt tonight, and I'll ask our city clerk to please read it.
I'm getting there. There it is. A proposed motion that the Paducah Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Accept an Easement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and TC3 LLC, Owner of Property Located at 723 Cruz Avenue." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah to accept a permanent utility easement between TC3 LLC and the City of Paducah for and in consideration of $1 for an area located on the west side of Cruz Avenue and south of Marianne Drive."
So moved.
Second.
We read, we had this one a couple of weeks ago. Are there any questions? Are we okay moving forward? Okay. I'll, I'll ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gass.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. We have four ordinances to introduce tonight, and I'll ask Pam to go ahead and read the first one.
A proposed motion that the Paducah Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Interlocal Cooperative Agreement with McCracken County Fiscal Court, Paducah Waterworks, Paducah Power System, Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency, and McCracken County Property Evaluation Administrator for the Provision and Maintenance of the Geographic Information System for the Mapping of McCracken County." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Interlocal Agreement Which Adds the McCracken County Property Evaluation Administrator to the Current Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Paducah, McCracken County Fiscal Court, Paducah Water, Paducah Power, and McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency for the Provision and Maintenance of the Geographic Information System for the Mapping of McCracken County." This agreement allows the PVA to provide in-kind services for the benefit of GIS in lieu of payment as was required by all other members.
So moved.
Second. Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and I guess City Clerk, Communications Manager. Not sure how to address you tonight. So what you have before you tonight is an, is a new interlocal agreement for our GIS services, and essentially that's the mapping services that the organizations Pam listed runoff of. And the members that are part of the consortium are the city, the county, Paducah Power, Paducah Water, JSA, and 911. And this is actually a new, it's a longstanding agreement we've had. I think the first one was in 1999. And it's one of the, it's a really great community partnership that we have. It allows all of those organizations to really leverage that technology in a really efficient way so that we're able to share the cost of hardware and software licensing. And it's a really powerful tool. So it's a great consortium and partnership we have. So what this new interlocal agreement does is it allows the PVA to join with in-kind services. And originally, it was $120,000 for the entities to form the consortium. They have provided over $200,000 worth of aerial mapping to the consortium at no cost. And additionally, there is one other change in the interlocal agreement that there's a steering committee that makes up the consortium, and currently we have two at-large members to the consortium. One is appointed from the city, one is appointed from the county. Those members typically don't join the meetings because it's so focused on internal operations that they don't find, you know, a lot of value in them. So that can cause quorum issues and other things. So we are recommending that those two at-large members are removed from the steering committee. The county has adopted the ILA. It's now before you, this does come at the recommendation of the GIS Steering Committee. It will then go before the other agencies for their approval, and then ultimately to the DLG for, submit it to DLG because it is an interlocal agreement. So.
Great. Maybe City Manager, Michelle, maybe you could just explain to everybody, you know, how important our GIS system is. I mean, how we use it. Go ahead.
Sure.
You know, I'm not sure that everybody in the audience might understand it. It's amazing.
It is amazing. GIS is really core component of how all of our services operate today. And basically, it's, it's the mapping information. It's a really incredible tool. And it's, all of our software is leveraged off of this mapping. So it's really like a foundational base for the software that all of our departments operate from, including, you know, JSA, Paducah Power, Paducah Water. It's pretty amazing. It has, you know, ownership data. It has utility information. The utilities are able to actually track inventory with it and the actual location throughout the city. It's just a really amazing, powerful tool that we leverage really well here as a community.
So it's got all the pipe, you know, all the, both stormwater and JSA, you know, sewers, and it's got all that tracked. 911 uses it, uses it for exact location of people.
Yep. That's right.
You know, when they need it. It's really just an amazing tool, and people from the community, you know, can access it.
That's right.
You know, can actually go on it and, you know, look at parcels and look at a lot of things out there.
We have a lot of tools that are available to the public. There's zoning information. There's owner information. There's, if you haven't visited our website, please do, because there's a number of maps that are available to the community.
And to that point, Mayor, you, you made a very good point. You know, when we, we pick up a phone and, and put in a map and open up Google Maps, or we do Google Earth, the backbone, the data set from that is graphic information that is collected from multiple data sets. And that's what we're talking about for our use here locally. It is that type of data that is incorporated and built in the backbone that allows us to, to put out a map. And you can turn layers on and off that allow, so if you just want to see where the city limits boundaries are, you can turn off all the others, and it'll just show you on our mapping system what the city limits, or the county boundaries, or as Michelle mentioned, you know, the zoning, the different type of zoning. If folks go to the PVA website and type in an address and they're looking to pull that up, the backbone information, the data set that is built upon that is GIS information.
Yeah, it's, I've used it a few times. It's, it's amazing. I don't use it every day like, like many of our, our staff do, but it's, it's an amazing tool. So.
And our GIS, you know, we have a lot of talent in our GIS team, and they do a great job, you know.
Yeah, I'm glad you made that comparison to Google Maps, because when you think about, you know, you drive around, you, you know, you put in a location, or you, you look at Google Earth, and you think, how in the world did they get all that data, you know, into a system, you know? And so they got some pretty smart people working, you know, that's for sure. So. Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask Pam to read our, our second ordinance to introduce.
I move that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 78, Personnel Articles 2, Benefits and Leave, and Article 3, Compensation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "This ordinance removes any language in either article that conflicts with or and/or is addressed by collective bargaining agreements in which the rights and/or benefits may be different than those offered to non-union employees, removing any language specific to 911 employees, such as language that was only applicable when 911 was a standalone agency, adding language that allows part-time employees who work on designated holidays to be paid at time and one-half their hourly rate, including language that requires employees to follow HR 2021 Sick Leave Policy when requesting sick leave, defining the total amount of, amount of time fire department employees working 24-hour shifts may be paid while on military leave, updating the section relating to deferred compensation plans to include all deferred plans to which the city allows its employees to participate, and adding language to allow each department to define specialty pay."
So moved.
Second.
Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk. Pam hit all basically the big changes. I've got a summary section here. Under Chapter 78, which is the personnel ordinance, 78-31 on holidays, there is some text that was removed because that is no longer how fire and police handle paying out holidays. Changes to Section D, holiday pay, we now call that holiday pay for part-time seasonal or temporary employees. It used to be specific to 911 and 911 when it was covered by a board. So that's been updated. That section, Darren would have to send a memo every year to finance for them to pay holiday pay to part-time employees. So we won't have to So we won't have to do that anymore. On the Vacation Leave Subsection C, most of this section has been removed and refers back to collective bargaining agreements for 24-hour shift employees and how vacation accruals are handled. The same with Subsection F. A change in G, Employees Out on Unpaid Leave will no longer continue to accrue vacation leave while they're out. If it's unpaid leave, they will not accrue during that time. If it's a paid leave, they will continue. Subsection H, Changes to the Language on How Scheduling a Vacation Occurs. 911, Vacation Leave Follows Full-Time Employees. Sick Leave goes back to collective bargaining agreement. The Military Leave Section, that's for fire employees, correcting the language on how their time is accounted for based off the shifts they work. Our Group Life Medical, not everybody receives that same amount, so we're can, updating that section. Deferred Comp, we had three plans. And in the ordinance, it said only one that we were working with. And Specialty Pay, that is a new one. An example there, this will allow departments to create specialty pay for their employees. An example is fleet. We have a lot of fleet that earn certifications specific to diesel trucks or 911, fire. And it will allow us to create a separate compensation plan with ad pay for those certifications they earn.
So a lot of, a lot of cleanup.
A lot of cleanup.
A lot of cleanup and then a few new things.
A few new things.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I asked the city clerk to read the next ordinance.
I move that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the County of McCracken, Kentucky for the Provision of 911 Services." This ordinance is summarized as follows. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with McCracken County which adds language to the current interlocal cooperation agreement for the Provision of 911 service that establishes a joint appeals board which will be responsible for hearing those appeals of classification of property after review and denial by staff.
So moved.
Second.
City Manager.
Mayor Commissioners, this, originally, we had in our interlocal agreement that the county would have an appeals board and the city would have an appeals board. And as we got a little bit deeper into implementation, we had the discussion to say that was that really necessary to have duplicative efforts? And so what, what we are proposing is that we revise the interlocal agreement to create one appeals board. It'd be a joint appeals board. The members that serve on that, you'd have two appointees by the city, two by the county, and one joint appointment from the, the city and the county collectively. The members serving that joint appeals board would also be remunerated at $200 per meeting. It also allows us to do an administrative function before it goes to the appeals board. And so our hope with adding that step in is allow to, if somebody comes in and says, I believe that my property is miscategorized and they have the documentation to show that, there's no sense in waiting to an appeals board to get brought on and scheduled a meeting for them to hear that when it clearly lays that, the documentation would lay that out. And so we can be better and quicker responsive to an appeal and allow us that to go forward.
Okay. Questions? We okay? All right. I'll ask Pam to read the last ordinance we're introducing tonight.
I move that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Repealing Ordinance Number 2024-06-8816," and adopting a new ordinance establishing and imposing a fee on all occupied real estate parcels located within the territorial limits of the City of Paducah to facilitate funding for the provision of joint 911 services as more fully set forth in the interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Paducah and McCracken County. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah previously adopted an ordinance establishing a parcel fee on all occupied real estate parcels located within the territorial limits of the City of Paducah to facilitate funding for the provision of 911 services. Subsequent thereto, it was determined that all appeals filed by citizens for reconsideration of classification of property should first be considered by city staff, which would prevent the joint appeals board from having to convene to hear those appeals that staff can resolve by granting the requests made in said appeals. This new ordinance adds language to the previously enacted ordinance to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
And it's just the second step to what we just talked about on the ILA that we had to address that. And then because each body has to adopt by ordinance that, that aspect. It also, one other change is that we did the, the application for a residential unit, rental unit rebate, which was previously approved. We've updated that form to attach to this as well. But no changes in, in previous. It's just the appeals board and that.
All right. Will, if there are no questions, we'll move on. We have one discussion item for tonight. And Hope Reesens, our grant manager, is, as she makes her way up here, I'll just say that, you know, grants, municipalities are eligible for a lot of grants. Not, not every grant we're eligible for, but a lot of grants. And, and grant management and grant applications are very important. You know, whether it be for city streets, whether it be for sidewalks. You know, we got a recent major grant for Hotel Metropolitan, which drives tourism. So the management of that program is very important. And Hope's really digging in, so. Welcome, Hope.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and City Clerk. So tonight, I'm going to be going over, there, there is a delay between the end of our fiscal year and when we find out about a number of the grants that we applied for. And so the majority of those have come through now. So what I'm going to be primarily focused on is over the last fiscal year. So you all do have a report in the back of your packet that is going to list a lot of these grants individually that, that I, you know, I'm not going to do in the PowerPoint. So we had a really big year for grants. We now currently manage $26,293,461 in grant funding. Of that, our total required matching dollars for that is $1,750,091. During the fiscal year, we submitted 23 grant applications for a total amount of $10,844,476. We received 17 of those grants totaling almost $6.7 million. That is a, I'm very happy to say, a 74% success rate for our grants. That $6.7 million, that does include the $3.5 million state allocation that came through DLG for the Riverfront. And then the other $3.2 million is from the other grant applications that we submitted. I would also like to point out, we are also towards the end of the fiscal year, we're going to be closing out several grants. If you look on the end of the second, the third page, those have stars by them. So we're going to have several that we will be closing out here over the next few months. So tonight, I wanted to highlight just a couple of projects that we have been working on. The first one is our National Park Service Greenway Trail Technical Assistance Grant because we are now almost one year into that project. I just want to say, first of all, we have a steering committee made up of community members and city staff. And they have really put in a lot of hours into this project. I have been so grateful and excited to see the enthusiasm. We have held multiple community input meetings, both at the Civic Center, in the South Side, at WC Young, at the park. We've also had 444 community surveys collected, all to get that community input back into our planning process. And so right now, we, the National Park Service has taken all that information back. If you attended one of our community meetings, you saw we had big maps out on the table. Individuals were asked to map out where they, they thought, you know, trail routes could be. They talked about amenities and things they would like to see with the trail. So now the National Park Service is compiling all that information and they are coming back to us with different proposed routes and things that we can do. And so that's kind of, that's where we are right now. In our next steps, we'll be looking at those routes. We've been reviewing them with engineering and our other departments to say, you know, which of these are feasible, which ones are going to have some issues. We're getting more feedback from the steering committee. So this is really moving right along. And it's, it's really exciting to see all of this come about. And so I feel like over the next few months, we're going to see even more information coming out about this and moving forward.
Yeah, I would just echo what you said about the Greenway Trail Committee. And there's been a lot of community engagement. And everybody is stuck with it. And it's not been easy. It's been, it's been challenging at times because, and we're in that process right now of trying to figure out, you know, we're down to the nitty-gritty, so to speak, where we've got to decide on routes, you know? And, and, and there's, there's no clear path. So we've got some tough decisions to make. But, what do you say?
No pun.
Yeah, no pun intended. Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, there are a number of challenges on the, on the South Side with traffic and railway. But I, I feel confident we'll be able to, to come up with something really good. The other program I wanted to highlight tonight is our COPSS grant because that has been a three-year grant. And we are coming upon the end of this particular project. And this has been one of the ones, it has been really a joy to get the information back from because our school resource officers do so much and have done so many amazing things in the schools. These are just some of the things, the dare classes that they host across grades. They've held a Junior Citizens Police Academy. They monitor the hallways. Even in the elementary school, they'll take a student with them to walk through the school, look for possible safety issues, making sure doors are locked. Just this summer, they did a Christmas in July to help with students get back to, back to school clothes and shopping items. But really, one of the coolest things, and that's these last two, is the relationships that the resource officers have held, have developed with the students. It has become really a lot like a mentoring relationship with a lot of these resource officers and students. Students have become more open and willing to talk with the officers. And one of the interesting things about that is like the allegations, some of the more serious allegations related around to physical and sexual assault. There are more students coming forward and reporting those now. So there, there's way too many things that have gone on, you know, to list over the three years. And this is school resource officer Gretchen Mueller with her bearded dragon. And I just thought this picture was just too cute because that little boy was all dressed up like her and had his little lizard with him too, so.
Gretchen is well-loved.
Yes, she is. She is. She does a great, I'll do a great job. But I, I just wanted to highlight that and hit some of the high notes since it is coming to an end. But it, it has been highly successful and a lot of wonderful things have come out of this grant. So any questions or comments?
Looks good.
Good.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And thanks, I can tell since you, just in the last 12 months, I mean, I, I can tell you've really dug in on these grants and are getting more comfortable.
Yes.
You know, and going after more grants. And also, I know that you help community members from time to time because you can't write every grant.
No.
You know, that, that people want to try to go after. But you do offer advice to community members. And I know that's appreciated by people out there, you know, going after grants. So you've kind of become a subject matter expert. So we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Yes. Okay, City Manager, any comments?
None this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Comments from Commissioners?
No, thanks for clearing up, clearing up your statements earlier because there was a lot of, a lot of information out there the last week.
Oh, that's, that's for sure.
I just, one thing I'd like to point out is this isn't really a city-focused thing. This is a community thing. It's like.
What, be clear what you're talking about.
I'm talking about the, the discussion of the immigration.
Okay.
It's a city, it's a county issue, it's a nonprofit.
It's a community issue.
Absolutely. So it's not just, seemed like all the stuff I saw on social media was city this, city that. And it just, I don't know why sometimes things just default to city when there's a lot more to the community than just the city. So it's a comment. Thank you.
Okay. We do have an executive session. Are we, we going to take action when you come out?
We anticipate taking action.
Okay, and we anticipate taking action. And so I would entertain a motion.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners. Want me to read it?
Please, sort of, ma'am.
Yeah.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. The future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.8101B.
So moved.
Second.
Paul Roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Aye.
You do that.
I don't know.